To call the meeting to order, the October 11th, school committee meeting is now in session. I'd like to remind the members of the community that we're being recorded for cable access right over here. So, the first item on the agenda is approval of the regular meeting minutes for September 13th, 2017. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes for regular meetings, September 13th, 2017.
Second. Any comments, questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Second on the agenda is student recognition awards. Edwards Elementary School.
Okay, here we go. Very pleased to announce that Jessie Ayers has been chosen as the student of the great fight team this year, this month. Jessie is an outstanding student, she's close to 100% into all of her work, she's very organized, she is focused and always engaged during the class discussions. She's an excellent, excellent, that's a mathematical thinker, as well as a diligent reader. She's extremely polite and kind, she's always willing to help a peer and help out around the classroom. Outside of school, Jessie loves to play soccer, she's on the town soccer team and also helps support our varsity girls soccer team. As far as a ball girl at the games, Jessie enjoys doing gymnastics. She has seven pets, although, yeah, six, a mix, and six siblings. She loves spending time with them all. She also enjoys jogging and listening to music. When she grows up, she hopes to be a professional soccer player or an interior decorator. Her hard-working, positive energy, kindness towards others is what makes Jessie stand out to the fifth grade team. She's very deserving of this honor. Congratulations.
We might want to ask you one question.
Do we have any questions?
Hi Jess, how are you? Congratulations. So, one of the things that we always ask the fifth graders is what their favorite subject is right now. So, what is your favorite subject?
Um, probably social studies.
Ms. Pepe is always... Can I just tell you? We will let Mrs. Avery know, but you like math too, right?
Yeah.
Okay, very good. So, you like to read. Are you reading anything right now that you like?
Um, I'm reading Nancy Drew book and a poem book.
Nancy Drew, very good. And I've seen you play soccer. I know you're a pretty fantastic little soccer player. So, what position are you playing these days?
Um, left midfield.
Left midfield. And the town team, how are you guys doing?
Uh, we lost one and won the rest.
So, one loss?
Yep.
And you're ready to come across the street next year and play for the middle school, right?
Yeah.
I know you're looking forward to that, aren't you? What's so, what's your favorite thing about fifth grade so far?
Um, I like how shorter the classes are than last.
Jess, don't say that, Dr. Schopfer. Good job, Jess. Anybody else have questions for Jessie?
Well, Jessie, we want to congratulate you. This is quite the honor, and it's really awesome, you're student of the month. You guys just came back from a really cool field trip.
Uh, yeah.
Can you tell us a little bit about it?
Um, we went to Plumus Plantation, it was really fun because we've been learning about it since the first day of school. And I was really excited about seeing all the sites and how they acted, well, the pilgrims how they acted.
You think you'll be able to teach your family a few things around Thanksgiving?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's impossible. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Good job, Jess. Thank you.
Anthony O'Beal, come on up. I'm pleased to stand in for Chris Mornier tonight to offer the student of the month award to eighth grader Anthony Maroney. He is an engaged young man in all of his classes. He works hard on his assignments, both in and out of class. He's a major contributor to class and group discussions, and most importantly, he has a strong desire to learn, which is obvious from the way he carries himself. Anthony is a member of the varsity golf team. Anthony plays on the middle school basketball team. He is a good friend and leader in the eighth grade. Congratulations, Anthony.
So, I have to say also that I have known Anthony for a while now, and I have to agree, he is one of the nicest, most polite, just good kids you would ever want to meet. And one of the things that we didn't mention about him is he's also a pretty fantastic baseball player. And I have also known that for a long time, he has an incredible work ethic with regard to his school work, and that he's always been a model student. So, no surprise at all that you're standing in front of us right now. And congratulations to you, because it's well deserved.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anthony, I can't say, I echo what Mrs. Green said, but I've seen you on the baseball field. Last year, we won the championship, and you had a great season. And got a chance to watch you playing golf a little bit this year, because I sneak in and watch you in the last couple of holes. Ricky's still trying to beat you, but he can't seem to do it. And, but what's your record in baseball, in golf right now?
Uh, so, we just lost today, so we had two losses. We have a tie, and then we won everything else.
Who'd you play today?
Oakmont.
Oh. And how about your own record?
Uh, I've lost one match.
That's great.
Good for you.
An eighth grader, too, so, that's fantastic.
Thank you.
You better be good, because you have a nice golf course to practice on. Congratulations.
Yeah, I just want to congratulate you, Anthony. I know this is quite the honor, and eighth grade, so next year's freshman year, it's big time. And I know you're quite the role model for your brother as well, so...
That wasn't caught on camera.
You can get him there. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Good job, Anthony.
I'm very, very pleased to welcome Nicole Nelson, our 10th grade student of the month. As president of the Gay Straight Alliance and head of the Steering Committee for the Social Justice Club, sophomore Nicole Nelson has become an important and integral part of our school community. Nicole has made a wonderfully positive impact on her peers, the student body, and on our school culture. Her academic abilities, leadership skills, and work ethic belie her youth. Last spring, Nicole organized a Skype chat session with the Education Department of the Global NewsHour Democracy Now!, located in downtown Manhattan. Nicole is also a volunteer member of a local climate change group called 350 Central Mess. Her current role is to redesign their website, as well as to process their social media. Nicole is an inspiration to the faculty that work with her, a mentor figure to the middle school students that work with her, and a youth hero in the social justice movement. Amongst some of her accomplishments are the following: organizing a rally for free speech and freedom of the press to bring awareness to an investigative journalist who was arrested for covering a news story; helping to organize the social justice club's participation in the March for Science at Boston Common; coordinating field trips to Worcester State University's environmental film series; organizing and inviting guest speakers, including a Worcester State senior who presented on the topic divestment and climate change; creating a social justice club brochure. And I would add that Nicole also gave up a few days in her summer to videotape and photograph our new teacher induction program. So, I am delighted to offer this award to Nicole tonight.
So, I recently met Nicole. She came to a PTA meeting with Mr. Palmer, and she's working on something else that I actually think our friends from the ITO might be very interested in. These guys are organizing a talk at the Beeman Library about gas leaks in town and in surrounding areas. And they are working really hard to inform the public about what's going on. And listening to some of the things that she has done as a sophomore in high school is pretty impressive. Going out and reaching out and organizing these things and working with a lot of people. You've reached out to people on Beacon Hill. She's not afraid, she's a warrior. So, I am very, very proud to have her as one of our students here in West Boylston, and I think you are going to do amazing things. So, congratulations on this, it's well deserved. You're welcome.
What you're doing, and what Dr. Schopfer told us about, is exceptional. And not the normal sophomore year student type of stuff. And what you're doing isn't just making the building a better place, and your class and the rest of your classmates better. That thing extends beyond the walls of this building. So, that's exceptional, and I can tell you right now, we're all exceptionally proud of you, that you are a student here at West Boylston High School. And keep fighting the good fight. It's awesome.
Nice job, Nicole. Thank you, families, for joining us. We just want to thank all of you for your support of your students in the school district. We know that these guys are here because they have a lot of support at home, and we recognize that, and thank you for joining us tonight.
Next on our agenda is student advisory council. Caitlin Nelson.
So, for our football team, last Friday, we won against Lunenburg, 42 to 12. Our next game is this Friday at home against Gardner. It's our homecoming game, our senior night, and it's also the last home game of the season.
So, everybody should be there.
Yes.
Okay.
The golf team played Tejano yesterday on Tuesday and won, and today they played Oakmont, and they lost 3 to 1. And they play tomorrow at Air at 3:30. That's soccer. Never mind, that's soccer.
Girls soccer played Narragansett yesterday and lost 3 to 1, and they play tomorrow at Air at 3:30.
For National Honor Society, they're selling entertainment books for fundraising, for fundraising for projects they have yet to announce.
For FISH, we're focusing on drug addiction awareness and climate change awareness right now. We're hoping to pull together assembly at some point of the year, and we're looking for speakers as well.
On National Honor Society is working on calendars, which are flowers of the month, and they're supposed to be desk calendars for the teachers. And they're also working on paint night, which the theme is supposed to be the rail trail.
Our In It to End It Awareness Club, we are looking to spread awareness at this week's football game around cancer and breast cancer and all, like, we're going to make ribbons with all different types of colors so that we can kind of expand the spectrum. We're going to be passing out ribbons, prizes, and we're hoping to do a little fundraising via donations.
It's a big week for student council, it's homecoming week, so we have Penny Wars, Powderpuff, which was yesterday, and the seniors won Spirit Week, Tuesday's Lions Pride Day, Wednesday's Disney Character Day, Thursday's Paparazzi versus Celebrity Day, and Friday's Class Color Day. And decorating the gym for the pep rally, and then homecoming is on Saturday at 6:00.
And then for Tryon Music Honor Society, January 25th is going to be our Coffee House Night, which is high school only, and it's going to take place in the cafeteria. We're also looking to figure out a date for open mic night in March, where all grades are welcome.
Great.
Thank you, Ms.
All right, our next agenda item is the acknowledgement of our camera crew, so I'd like to thank you for helping broadcast our meetings, and I'd like to thank Mr. Johnson for helping keep our records in order. Next on the agenda is the Highlight of Schools, our district improvement.
It is, your district improvement plan. I'd like to apologize ahead of time, because I'm having a little, little cold issue.
Just in time.
Just in time, perfect timing. Okay, our district improvement plan, as you know, follows very closely from the strategic plan that we developed for the district for 2017 to 2022, and you had a good glimpse at that last year. What we try to do with the district improvement plans yearly is really flesh out exactly what's going to happen, when, and who's going to do it. So, we have as our smart goal for student learning, by the way, the state requires that every educator set a student learning goal and a professional practice goal. Our student learning goal is one that all of us in the district share, and that is by June 2018, the percentage of students obtaining a passing score on state assessments will be at least 5% above the state average in every content area tested. And that's for all students who've been enrolled in the West Boylston Public Schools for at least two years. We usually meet it, or we can meet it, for students who have only been here for one year, but we know that we have a greater impact as time goes on on the achievement of students. And we base this on the state-level data. This year, and I'm going to talk about it in my report, maybe I'll do it now instead, we are, we're very late in getting, we don't have our MCAS data yet. We don't even have our upper-level data. Rich and I are going to sit in on a conference call tomorrow to learn when we'll get it and what, what the composition of it will be. This is unprecedented to be this late in the year and not have that data yet. So, we're still holding our breath. It is a brand-new test this year, MCAS 2.0, and we don't know, you know, what to expect, but we'll have more information next month for you. So, regarding our, our strategic objective number one, I'm just going to do the big objectives and not the smaller ones. Our strategic objective is to ensure that our curriculum's aligned with the mass curriculum frameworks. And this, this year, the difference that we've made in this goal is that we also want to start pushing in blended learning platforms and other 21st century integrated innovations. Every time we write a curriculum, we're going to ask ourselves, what's out there that's innovative in the technological realm that we can infuse this curriculum with to just give our kids an extra boost? One of the things that we're doing for that this year is to pilot a Summit Learning Program in grade six, which is an online program. We have a teacher trained, and she's already working in it. I've been in that classroom several times. It's really a wonderful program that she's running, totally blended. You know, the kids are online as much as they're working in their classroom, and it's really getting a lot out of them. So, we'll, at some point in time, we'll give you a full report on that program, too. And that's also a program that we could expand into other grade levels and into other subjects if we end up liking it a lot, and so far, we really do like it a lot. The other goal that we want to work on, you know, we know that students come to us with a lot of needs that are not just academically needs, so we want to focus on how can we, as a school district, help to personalize the education that we give so that we're responsive to students' social and emotional needs, so that they can have a good day in school? Towards that end, we're keeping this as a standing item on our administrative agenda to discuss what we see, what we think the needs are that we have. We're bringing in a highly-ranked national speaker, Jessica Minahan. She's coming in March to do a workshop training for all of the teachers in the district. The third strategic objective that we have is to hire, obviously, hire, retain, and continually develop high-quality staff members. The meat on the bones that we're going to put with this year's actions are, we're going to develop and publish the induction program so that whoever comes in the future can know how we do business, so we won't lose track of any of this. We also have been developing the teacher induction workshops that we run in the summer. We're in our third year of that development, so we'll get that plan all taken care of, and it will be enacted next August. We're also working on our EPIC grant, which was funded by the state of Massachusetts to work with Assumption College on special education, teacher education. And we're doing what I think is going to be some really pivotal and wonderful work at our elementary school and at our middle high school, but focused on the elementary school, in trying to get every single teacher trained in multi-sensory literacy approaches so that no students with dyslexia or dysgraphia or special, special literacy learning needs at the young ages fall through the cracks. We've brought on board the Wilson, the Wilson Language Learning Program. They're based out of Oxford, Massachusetts, but they're world-renowned, and we have teachers working with them. It's going to be one of those programs that's tiers one, two, and three. So, tier three is when you talk about something that's going to be given to all students. The program all students are going to be given at the elementary schools called Foundations. They're going to get it in kindergarten, first, and second grade. For tier two, some children will get a little double dose of Foundations, but they might also get a program called Just Words, which will also help develop their skills. But that would be, tier two would be work outside of the classroom, extra, in addition to what they're getting. And then the tier one work is really for students who, does it go the other way? It's one, two, and three.
Yeah. It's like, because it's the pyramid, it looks like three, three, one.
Yeah. Tier, tier, so tier three. Tier three is the work that's done, very individualized, one-on-one with a student, helping them, multi-sensory approach to reading instruction. I took the lead on this program, and I've been trained, or I'm going to finish in November, but I'm being trained as a Wilson Level One facilitator, teacher, rather. We have three additional teachers who are going to be trained in that method. This is the program that's used in any time we've had to place a student outside of the district for language-based learning disabilities or dysgraphia or dyslexia. If we had this program in the district, we would not have had to place those students outside of the district. So, the cost is, it's going to save us down the road at some point in time. Not only that, but every teacher is going to have just much better skills. We're really delighted about that. Our three teachers who are being trained had their first session with the facilitator today. It's, we're, we think this is going to be a game changer. We think this is going to be the recipe that's going to move the school district from level two to level one, in short time. Our fourth strategic objective is to develop and enact a communication plan that focuses on homeschool partnership for student success. We plan to develop workshops and really engage parents in how, how can you use what's available, whether it be Google Classroom, or School Brains, or Summit Learning? How can you support your child in the use of these things? We know that parents get frustrated if they don't understand the platforms. So, what Chris and his team up here are doing, they're putting together videotaped workshops that will be online. People can watch it if they can't come to the workshop, they can watch it online and know how to do everything that they need to do to support their child. We are sending a few teachers, I think five from the district, two from Major Edwards, and three from the middle high school to become Google Classroom facilitators. They're going to a boot camp at the end of October to get that license certification. Our la, our last objective in the...
When you say homeschool partnerships?
Yeah.
You're not talking about kids getting homeschooled?
No. Home and school.
Home and school. Okay, I, I, initially, I was like, I said, how many of our kids are in that? You were basically saying, parents and...
Yes.
Okay, just wanted to make sure you understood.
Home and school partnerships, yeah. We're also looking for, our fifth objective is to decide whether there's a need for improvement, repair, or replacement of our school facilities. This isn't a short-term project, obviously. This year, we would just like to meet with key stakeholders in the town. We'd like to develop our statement of interest and submit it to the Massachusetts School Building Authority. We would like to request the votes of the school committee and the Board of Selectmen on that school building statement of interest, that's a required step, and then submit that. Next year, we would be looking at hiring a consultant. If things look like, if we're getting a positive vibe here, we would go with a consultant next year to start to develop a plan. In the area of management and operations, this is work that the school committee and I do together, to work with the school committee to maintain operations and compliance with state and federal regulations and district policies. We will, I will work with the policy subcommittee, I haven't done it yet, to come up with the policies that we'll review for this year, and those will, those will then get onto this plan. For fiscal systems, we, I always like to be very transparent about how the budget process works. You'll see it once in this plan, you'll see it again in November when we bring it, bring you the beginning of the budget planning. Obviously, we do a bottom-up budgeting. We ask teachers, what do you need? That's our first step. What do you need to do your best work? And go from there. Our safety goal has remained the same over the past few years, and we do think it's a good goal. We work with the Alice Program. We have a very strong relationship with the West Boylston Police Department on that, on that work. And we did actually have a great, you were going to talk about the fire departments? Okay, good, I'll leave that, I'll leave that for Rich. So, that's the size of the, the district improvement plan, definitely enough to do. It'll keep us a little busy.
Thank you.
And I do, would ask for a vote on this.
Do we need a motion to approve that school district improvement plan?
I'll make a motion that we accept the West Boylston Public Schools District Improvement Plan, 2017 to 2018, as presented.
Second. Any comments, questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
The next agenda item is community input. I don't see too many for inputs, so we'll move on to warrants. I need a motion for approval of the payables warrant dated October 2nd, 2017. Do I have a motion?
Sure, I'll make a motion to approve the payable warrant dated October 2nd, 2017.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And I need approval for payroll warrants dated September 22nd, 2017, and October 6th, 2017. Do I have a motion?
I make a motion to approve payroll warrants, September 22nd, 2017, and October 6th, 2017.
Second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And, let's see, Subcommittee Reports, Budget and Capital Planning.
We, we met tonight, Mr. Tony wasn't there, but we met tonight, and we discussed several items in respect to some capital need issues, such as the weight room and the phys ed classroom downstairs, and the gym area, and a plan, a plan to replace everything and clean it up, make it nice. I like the idea. I suggest it, I recommend it to the school board. Also, we discussed some other needs that are also on the capital planning board. The budget, we really didn't discuss much on the budget, so at this point, that's it, on that.
You do have one action item I could speak to?
Yeah, yep.
The town manager...
Oh, I don't know.
Yes, has asked if we, if we could have the committee vote, the motion that we'd like to have you vote is sitting in front of you. It's a motion to accept the West Boylston Energy Reduction Plan as proposed for school-related projects and initiatives. You had probably the largest packet we've ever given you, and on pages, let's see, didn't I write which pages they were on? Anyways, somewhere in here, on, if you had a chance to look, on Major Edwards, there's a plan for Major Edwards Elementary School. It starts on page, unnumbered. Yeah, it's unnumbered, but it's about this far end. Sorry, I wish I could do better than that. It's a plan for about $133,000 worth of upgrades, energy conservation upgrades, including things like putting timers on water coolers, putting, using smart power strips instead of just any old power strips, getting Energy Star refrigerators installed in all of our cafeterias, and trying to reach all Energy Star standards for all of our appliances that we use. And the plan that was given to us by the town manager is a plan that was developed in order to support the town's application for the Green Community Project. The school committee does not have to authorize these projects to move forward immediately, but with goodwill, they have to signify by saying that they accept the plan, that they're willing to work on things that are in this plan over the next five years. At the meeting that we just held, the budget subcommittee meeting, we talked about including these items, these exact items on our capital plan for our schools. We think that's the right way to go, to do the energy upgrades as part of capital planning, so that we always have us in touch with the capital planning board and the town regarding these items. So, my recommendation is that you do accept this plan, and with good faith, to try to make these changes to improve the green energy systems in the town. And we do have a lot of the town in our domain here.
We do.
I may not be the best person to answer questions, but together, Roger and I might be able to do a little bit for you.
So, I just want to, I read through the letter and some of this. I just want to bring up, in the past, we were asked to do an energy project that I don't think turned out the way any of us had hoped that it would with respect to finances. So, I would just ask, we have a copy of a letter from the town administrator. It says, "The state requires that your school committee vote to adopt the Energy Reduction Plan and to make a concerted effort to complete the various different projects or measures within five years. There is no penalty for not completing the projects or initiatives listed, nor is there any penalty for not achieving an overall 20% energy use reduction within five years. The state simply wishes communities to make a commitment to try to achieve the desired 20% energy use reduction within five years." I want to make sure that this is somewhere on the record so that four years from now, somebody doesn't come back to us and say, "You guys were supposed to have X, Y, and Z done," especially because no one's telling us that they're going to give us money to buy these energy-efficient refrigerators. And I agree, it's the right way to go. But it's, again, a financial obligation for us. And if we're going to make the commitment to try and do this, I want to make sure we're not going to face any kind of penalty somewhere down the road where somebody says, "Oh, sorry, no, you were actually supposed to have..." I just, I'm not trusting that this is what it is, I guess, because of what happened previously.
Right.
I don't know if anybody else...
Our safety net for that, our safety net is that we're going to include it on our capital plan, which we actually work jointly with the capital planning board and with the FinCom. So, I feel that that's a productive way to do this, that they would be always aware of which parts of this we were able to do and which parts we were not, so that the whole burden doesn't fall on the schools to do it all.
I just want to make sure we're covered.
Yeah, because it is, that's... Yeah, 'cause it is, that's $133,000 approximately for Major Edwards and $171,000 for the middle high school approximately in upgrades.
Right.
So, as part of that motion, then, would it be feasible to include that letter from the town administrator as part of the plan?
As, I think you covered with the "as proposed."
So that letter is part of the proposed?
It is, yeah.
All right, do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to accept the West Boylston Energy Reduction Plan as proposed for school-related projects and initiatives.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further comments, questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Legislative Subcommittee?
Legislative Subcommittee, we just discussed briefly, the Mass Conference this year is November 1st down on the Cape. And if anybody's interested in going, please see Dr. Sharper, and she can coordinate and schedule. Wednesday, November 1st, first?
Is it Friday?
Well, it's usually a weekend, isn't it?
Is it going to be a weekend?
Right, but it starts on the first.
It starts on the first, doesn't it give me a...
Let's see, Communication Reports, Mr. Mahar.
As Dr. Sharper mentioned, we had a facilitator here, Kathy Sharbro from the Wilson Institute. Spent the morning down at Major Edwards with grades, grades one and kindergarten, doing a demo lesson in each grade, and then doing learning groups afterward. Went very well, the reviews were wonderful, and she's gonna return three more times this year. You may have heard, we have a yellow jacket issue that persists down in the gym. We've been lucky with the weather, we've been able to coordinate all of our events and activities without too much of a disruption. They've sprayed numerous times. The head and Rick today brought the lift down to the corner right-hand interior of the gym and sprayed, and there, they've been on the exterior a number of times. The yellow jackets seem to have diminished on the exterior, but inside, they are still present. So we'll see how that looks tomorrow morning, and hopefully, that will be remedied shortly, because it doesn't seem like it's gonna cool off anytime soon. I'll keep you updated on that. We've had successful field trips to the Plymouth Plantation, as Jesse had mentioned. Grade Five went last week, and Grade One went to the Sugas Farms. Reviews were rave across the board for all of those. Jay Dugan, Officer Dugan, spent an hour with us on Friday afternoon, giving us a review of the Alice Protocol and highlighting some changes that needed to be made based on the observations from the June drill in terms of contingency plans, and listening for additional information before attempting to make a move out of the building. Dr. Sharper mentioned the fire safety program that was underway yesterday for the lower grades. That was, thank you to the West Boylston Fire Department for spending the entire day at the building, role-playing various scenarios, drop and roll, et cetera. The kids were very receptive to that. They were down in the library and then outside of the building. So again, thank you to the department for that. And I also wanted to, since my colleague isn't here, I'm gonna take a couple of minutes and share the email that I shared with staff on Friday. We had a gentleman, Mallory Bagwell, from Connecticut, spent the morning with Grade Four over on the fields with a geo-shaped project where they were spread out and they constructed a large-scale geometric shapes on the field. It was a great morning for them, and I did the evening email check, and I think all of us know that feeling sometimes, when you check the evening email, the news isn't always positive. But this gentleman got home and wrote that, "I had visited 2,200 schools over the years, and today's experience was among the most memorable. Most evident was the atmosphere of enthusiasm evident in the voices of the staff that contained a genuine bounce of joy. Everyone he was introduced to expressed a moment of laughter, very rare and very telling. Such a culture of care is not accident, but is also hard to prescribe. Kudos to everybody, especially your students who made for such a beautiful mosaic of joyful learning on a beautiful fall day and brilliantly reflected so much of what is right and good and ought to be in education today. I had a blast." So I thought that was a very nice email, very well-written, and worthy of sharing with everybody. That's all I have.
Very nice.
That's great.
Thank you.
Starts with a "uh."
Dr. Sharper, do you have a report for the high school, or no?
Oh, no, no. It's in writing.
Very good.
I have nothing to say. Everything is...
Mr. Poprey, I have very little to report. The expenditure report is in progress, and you can see we have made progress on our encumbrances. See, we have now over $9.2 million in encumbrance, okay? Still a few items left. It's like 90% complete on the encumbrances, but we continue to work on them. Other than that, the expenditure report is in progress. September. Thank you. Any questions on any of the individuals running? Dr. Sharper?
I have given you your teacher attendance, which is mighty fine-looking pie there, almost all blue. Not very many teacher absences at all. People are, you know, the cold season's kicking in though, I can tell, so. I'm not wishing they did that, but I also have your student attendance and suspension data as of 9/30/17. I did wanna say a word about the MCAS release schedule, as I alluded to before. The, you know, we use this data at real-time to make decisions about how we do our business. So I wanted to just lay out for you the problems at the school level and at the school committee and district level for not having this data in a timely way. At the school level, we actually use that data as one of our pieces of decision-making for Tier Two services. So without that, we are using other data, but it's not a complete set, and we're not happy about that. We like to have that data in September so we can actually understand who the children are, who are going to need additional supports to get to the end of the road and pass at the end of the year. We make curriculum adjustments also. So for example, if we notice that something was across the board a bad score, we try to make sure that we have in place a good curriculum plan to address that topic. We can't do that without that data, so we're really blind without that. And now we're significantly far into the school year to have to be reshaping that plan. At the school committee and district level, you know that the MCAS data is one of the serious measures by which you assess me and by which I assess school principals. So without this data, we are holding off on evaluations until later in the year than is really practical. You know, we used to do my evaluation at the end of the year. That wasn't practical because we didn't have any data to go on. We moved it into September, because that, or October, because that seemed like a better place we could then have data to use, but now we're talking about probably November. So, you know, this is just a little troublesome. So we're going to do the district MCAS report in November rather than in October this year. And both schools will present their MCAS data in December.
That's if you have it.
We should have it. We're gonna find out tomorrow, but we think we're gonna have it. You know, the issue is, we won't have had a long time to digest it, so, you know, we'll work on it for you. But I just wanted you to be aware that, you know, the state asks us to buy into the MCAS program, and we buy in with a good heart, thinking we're gonna get this return, and now we're not getting the return. Now, this is the first year of this test, so I think we have to cut them a little bit of slack, but I do hope that the timeline is a little bit better next year.
But has Desi at least been in communication with you guys about why, up to this point?
Not really. A little bit, not significantly. The other thing I wanted to tell you about is, you've heard for a few months now about the grant that we got to work with Assumption College. My colleague from Assumption and I, we submitted a proposal to the Council for Exceptional Children, to their annual conference. That has been accepted. So we're gonna present the findings of our collaboration at their annual conference, a little feather in our cap, yep. And then you have the annual indicators of progress for the high school. And that's all I have for you this evening.
So I just think it's worthy of note that, I mean, the delay in the standardized testing results has some immediate effects, right? But it also has some pretty significant downstream effects, because you can't course correct. We're two months into the school year. So we can't course correct. That potentially could affect outcomes for this school year, which could potentially affect, you know, all the things that it's already dealing with this year, so.
Yeah. It is worth noting, I agree.
It is worth noting. So, School Committee Reports. The only thing I have is, as a member of the Townwide Planning Committee, a synopsis of the strategic plan for submission to the town, distributed a little earlier. So what I ask folks to do is take a look at it. It's basically a synopsis of the plan that we've already approved, boiled down to a couple-page template for the town. Just read it. If there's anything you'd like me to add or change, just funnel it to the superintendent, and I'll direct you to the presentation. So, unless anybody has anything else to say, we can adjourn the meeting. Do I have a motion?
What's the motion to adjourn?
Do I have a second?
A second.